I'd like to call to order the work session, June 26, 2019. I'm going to ask, first of all, welcome, all right? I'm going to have our city manager welcome you to us, totally. But before that happens, because this is a combination, we're going to do a roll call from the city clerk as to who is here tonight. We do, I believe, have someone missing out of this group. So, city clerk, you're on.
Vice Mayor Stiff.
Present.
Councilmember Pizzillo.
Here.
Councilmember Loretano.
Present.
Councilmember Campbell.
Present.
Councilmember Hampton.
Here.
Councilmember Kano.
Present.
Mayor Lord.
Here.
Commissioner Maloney.
Here.
Commissioner Ellison.
Here.
Commissioner Kleimer.
Here.
Commissioner Steiner.
Here.
Vice Chairman Barnes. Commissioner Kish is absent, and Chairman Bray is absent.
So we have two of them there, okay? All right, I'm going to, would you like to make your announcement now before I get on? This is our city manager, Julia Arundel, and you all know her.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to welcome mayor and council and our planning and zoning commission to this very special joint meeting of the two bodies to talk about a very special project, the potentially future city hall for the city of Goodyear. So, very excited to have a presentation for you tonight. We hope that this work session is an opportunity to share thoughts and ideas and react to the presentation that will be made by staff whenever you're ready, mayor. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Before we begin, I'm going to announce there's really a lot of echo.
It's a lot of echo.
It's a lot of echo tonight. I'm hearing echo here where I never heard it except here.
Well, you're echoing here, I mind, because I feel like I'm echoing, especially with my
hearing aids, so I don't get just one, I get a couple there, so. Is there anything they can do back there on the sound?
So Jeff can hear you, so he'll be back there working on it.
Great, well, I'll start on this. So, we're going to make an announcement here because we know we have some people in the audience that are unaware of this is going on, we want to be clear about it. So, the item on the agenda is for work session item, and we'll not have any speakers. The planning and zoning meeting will begin after the work session, and we'll have, you will have the opportunity for speakers to speak. We only have one item on the agenda tonight, and I'm going to remind council, and I'll remind the rest of you, the staff will be pausing intermittently to answer any questions. So, they get this sense of where they should stop, or we kind of go like this, and they stop, one or the other, and then that's when you have your questions, rather than just kind of in the middle of it, putting your hand up. So, for me, this is very, very exciting, having been the city center chairman, and for Sherri Loretano, having been pregnant during this period of time and attending my meetings, for this to come about is extremely exciting, and I'm hoping that we'll get a lot of feedback from you tonight, and maybe ideas, so. All right, so, we will now receive a presentation and provide feedback regarding the rezoning for the Goodyear Civic Square at Australia Falls. We have several presenters tonight, our city manager, Julie Arundel, Christopher Baker, our development services director, and Kathy Wilken, our planning manager. So, you're on.
Thank you, mayor, council, and chairman, vice chairman and commission. Thank you all for making the time to attend and participate in this special meeting. As Julie and the mayor alluded to, we're really excited to have this conversation with you tonight about the proposed civic square project. The purpose of tonight is to familiarize you with the overall project, and then create an opportunity for there to be dialogue, not only amongst you all and staff, but amongst yourselves as well, and then ultimately provide us any particular direction on the project tonight. That way, we can make the needed adjustments before council votes on it on July 8. So, for the agenda tonight is to, we're going to review the highlights of the project from a high level, and then encourage council and planning commission to have the conversation, and also provide us some direction as well. As the mayor alluded to, we do have very strategic breaks in the presentation that are designed to encourage conversation amongst you and ask us any particular questions that you would like.
Thank you.
So with that, I'm going to turn the first part of the presentation over to Katie, who's going to give an overview of the property and the existing conditions.
Thank you. So, as you can see on the map, the property we're talking about tonight is highlighted in red with parcels A, B, and C. It's approximately 104 acres, and I do want to make it clear that this, what we're going to be discussing with the rezoning, does not include the regional mall site. There's an additional about 140 acres designated for the regional mall, and that zoning is not part, the zoning for that piece is not part of the rezoning hearing that'll be on tonight, or the work session we're discussing. The site is served by Liberty Utilities for water and wastewater. It's bounded by McDowell Road to the south and Encanto and Virginia to the north, and the Bullard Wash runs along the western border of the property. Surrounding the property, to the north is Rio Paseo. A large portion of Rio Paseo are single-family homes, 70, 60, 55-foot-wide lots are mixed in there. There's also a portion, I should use the pointer, so these are the single-family homes. Then there's a portion that are court homes, a portion that are, they're condos, but they're like triplex units, and then there's the multifamily site, Aldea. Also, Lib Goodyear is on the other side of the wash from the site, and then Palm Valley, Pebble Creek surround it on the outside. Oh, and the blue, on this slide, the blue is highlighted as the regional mall site. Infrastructure is already in place at the parcels and surrounding the parcels, the roads, traffic signals, and there are full improvements with the Bullard Wash park trail system. The general plan designates the properties as business and commerce. That allows for a variety of commercial, retail, entertainment-type uses. Residential is also permitted in the business and commerce, as long as it's higher density, 12 dwelling units per acre or more. The area is also designated by a village center and transit-oriented development overlays, portion of the property. And basically, what those overlays were doing was promoting pedestrian-oriented development, mixed-use development, gathering places in certain areas of the city. It's also worth noting, not just the land use map designation, but those of you who were part of the general plan committee, planning commission, council during the general plan update know that, you know, I think the top three things we heard from our residents during the general plan update were, when is the mall coming? We want more parks and open space, and we want a destination place, a gathering place. And that was kind of, we created guiding principles in the general plan, and here's just a few that I highlighted, such as creating those attractive and diverse destinations. We want to create a physically and socially connected community. We want to expand our parks, open space, and trails, and we always want to look for opportunities to maximize our partnerships and collaboration. But the entire general plan is littered with goals and policies to try and create those destination places and unique places for our community to gather with entertainment, recreation activities. I also wanted to provide an update of what happened in 2014. As we all know, the city center has been designated at Yuma Road and Australia Parkway for years, and there was an extensive public outreach, which the mayor was a part in 2004, I believe it was, 3, 4?
It started in 3, but yes.
Okay. And, you know, the city center site, so when you looked at the city, we had our city center site, what used to be known as the university park site, our ballpark and development complex south of the city center, we have the regional mall site, and then we have these important corridors. That's beyond some of our other major commercial shopping areas, such as Canyon Trails Town Center, or Palm Valley Pavilions. And so, when we were updating the general plan, we were also doing an economic development strategic plan, the city council was working on their strategic plan, and we invited the Urban Land Institute Technical Assistance Panel in, which was made up of volunteer experts, brokers, real estate professionals, developers from throughout the valley and even throughout the country. And we posed a major question of, just how do we attract more Class A office and get that destination entertainment we want to see? And they had several recommendations for us, but one of their major recommendations is that we should really consider locating city hall at the regional mall site. They felt, in their expert opinion, that everything we had going on with the ballpark, city center, and university park, it was just too big, and it was extending our resources a little bit, it wasn't going to be a walkable place. And so, if we really wanted to make something happen, it would be great to leverage city hall and those employees' daytime population somewhere in a location where we could then hopefully attract entertainment, recreation, and retail, restaurant-type uses at it. That was presented to city council in July 2014 in a work session, and it was generally accepted by council at that time. So, the area outlined in yellow is an entire area that's part of the Goodyear Planned Regional Center, PAD zoning. It was zoned in 2000 and 2001, it was zoned in a couple pieces. So, as you can tell, it included those residential areas and commercial uses in the same zoning document. It included a mix of uses, and one of the concepts was a graduated density concept. So, as you can see, the single-family lower density was closer to the existing single-family of Pebble Creek, and then it increased in density as it got to the regional mall site with the multifamily pieces closer to the commercial. That is a typical planning concept to have the lower-density uses, lower-intensity uses further out, and then as you get to more commercial uses, that multifamily or denser residential can serve as a buffer between those lower-density uses and commercial uses. As I said, it's own PAD, so of the three parcels that are highlighted that we're going to be talking about specifically, two of them are designated as mixed-use commercial, which is similar to our C2 district. The PAD does have its own permitted use list, but it's very similar to our C2 district. And then, this parcel here is actually zoned for that regional center, which is similar to C2 zoning, it's just slightly different to allow for the mall. And that concludes the history portion, so this is a great time to pause if you have any questions about history and background on the site.
Questions? No?
Can you go back two slides, I think? Nope, yeah, that one right there. One of the things that you touched on very briefly that I want to try to elaborate on is the concept of moving single-family into higher density as we get closer to, you know, a regional mall or some of the commercial. Can you talk a little bit about that? Because you said, oh, it's a planning concept, and then you were gone, so I think that's important. When we started looking at this project, I was on staff, and we were always under the impression that the mall itself was going to be surrounded by multifamily or this very tightly densely populated areas, and that was, that was where my memory left off at. So, can you talk a little bit about that concept, and has it, or how has it changed over the years?
Thank you, absolutely. So, basically, as you, you know, as you can imagine, commercial uses, and especially an intense commercial use such as a regional mall, you know, it's going to have bright lights. We don't want to limit hours of operation, so it could have noise almost 24/7, and those can have impacts to residents. So, generally, when you have less dense development, single-family, I'm going to have a backyard that I want to use and enjoy, and so things like lights, noise, traffic might impact me more as a single-family resident. Whereas, you get into the higher densities, you know, I might be in an apartment, I might be in a townhome, so maybe I don't have that backyard where those noise and lights are going to impact me as much. Oftentimes, higher density is often, means apartments, which might be rental, and so I have more flexibility to move. So if I move in and, oh, I don't like being next to the mall site, it's a little easier for me to move than if I purchased a single-family home. It's also helpful because when you start getting that rooftop density, it helps the commercial uses be successful. One, because people who work at those commercial places have somewhere close by to live. I know when I go to Arrowhead, I can see people walking to and from work with their shirts on, so there are certainly lots of people who work at these large, you know, this would be a job center, and so it provides a lot of housing for people. But it also, when restaurants, retailers are looking to locate somewhere, they look at rooftops, they want to know how many people are living in certain radiuses. So having those denser uses closer to those commercial allows us to attract those retails and restaurant users that we want to see. So there's a couple reasons for that. It's one, the impact to the people who are living there, but also to help the success of the commercial areas. And you can certainly see that at other places, like Arrowhead, you know, the whole entire north part of Arrowhead Mall is apartments. They're actually in the out parcels, what we call out parcels of the mall. If you look around Chandler Fashion Mall, there's a lot of multifamily housing around there. I mean, really, if you look at any regional mall site or intense commercial area, you're going to see this graduated density concept for some of those reasons.
That really hasn't changed over the years. You know, we've seen a lot of change in zoning and marketing, but I think what you're saying is that really hasn't changed from a concept with everything else, it's kind of remained static.
Yes, that's a, I think, a typical concept, and in fact, I think we're seeing more of an integration in residential uses when you look at places like Westgate, where they're actually bringing the residential even a little bit more in, or you might even see vertical mixed-use residential. So if anything, we're seeing the residential creep into the commercial a little more, but it's definitely a concept that we think retailers and restaurateurs are still looking for those, that density.
Thank you very much.
Any other questions? All right, proceed.
So, mayor and council and commission, we're going to now transition to talk about the actual proposed project a little bit in high level, and so, again, at the conclusion of this portion of the presentation, we'll obviously encourage any questions that you may have. So, the project itself, as Katie alluded to, is, or pointed out, rather, is approximately 104 acres, and it is broken out into three different parcels. There's parcel A, which is 48 acres, which has Monty Vista on the north and McDowell on the south. There's B, which is 39 acres, and there's parcel C, which is 17 acres. And it is important to note out, as Katie, as Katie pointed, that the roads around the entirety of the project and through it are already built to their fullest extent to handle the traffic. They were designed to handle, and built to handle the traffic of a regional mall site. So, what you see out there is what you're going to see out there. So, the project itself is a PAD, as Katie mentioned, and that is the appropriate zoning vehicle to work with the developer in order to bring this concept to life. The vision of the project is to create a destination, and a true destination that creates vibrancy for the city, employment, office employment type of uses as well, and opportunities, entertainment, as Katie alluded to, what citizens expressed during the general plan, recreational opportunities with the two-acre civic square that we're going to point to in a little bit as well, a mix of housing types and various densities, all with the concept in eye to create a very walkable and bikeable destination. And so, it'll be the destination of the West Valley. So as I mentioned, there's the three parcels, and we're going to kind of start high level and then get down a little bit further into discussing each parcel. But, so parcel A, my pointer, is this one right here, west of Harkins and east of the wash, and it has a variety of different land uses associated with it. Sort of this, there is commercial, retail, there's the civic uses, which would be the city hall, there's also residential allowed. Parcel B, which is to the north, south of the Rio Paseo neighborhood, on the north, or we'll start at the south end, on the south end of this parcel, right here, generally from where this pointer is moving across to the south, is more dense. It represents the gradation of density that Katie alluded to previously, so that's where the court home and the townhome-type products would be constructed. The northern part of parcel B, up here, is conventional, single-family on individual lots, so they mimic and very much represent, are compatible with the existing single-family residences to the north side of Virginia and Encanto in the Rio Paseo area. So here we have single, existing single-family, as Katie pointed out previously. Across the street, we'll have single-family, conventional, individual houses on individual lots. On parcel C, which is the 17-acre parcel here, the PAD proposal allows for both multifamily and/or commercial to take place on that property. So zooming in a little bit, parcel A, this is a closer vision of parcel A, which is, just to orient everybody again, here's the Harkins and McDowell and Monty Vista, is intended to be the most active portion of the project. It has commercial, retail, entertainment options, has the opportunity for housing, all within this one area. So I'm going to start, if I can, up here in the northwest corner. So the northwest corner allows for commercial and office to take place. When we were doing our preliminary planning about, what, a year ago or so, this property has some exceptional views, and now we all know that we don't buy views, but at the same point in time, there are some exceptional views, especially if you have a multi-story building, of both the White Tank Mountains and Buckeye to the west, and also the Australia Mountains south, which are in Goodyear. So this property here has some really great opportunities for some great vistas, especially if you're looking out your office window. This northeast quadrant over here is, allows for both a mixture of commercial and residential, so it could all be residential, it could be all commercial, or a mix thereof, just create some flexibility. The area that you see with the, with the buildings and the streets and the two-acre civic square in the middle, this is what we call the core area, and on my next slide, I'm going to zoom in a little bit to that, and we'll talk, we'll talk through the core. But south of the core, from this area here, this lighter shaded area, is general, similar to an analogous to the city C2 kind of general commercial districts, so that it would kind of theme or follow the development pattern that's taking place along McDowell Road. So, as I promised, this is the zoom in of the core area, and I'm going to kind of walk everybody through this. Here's the Bullard Wash, obviously. This is the existing amphitheater. You'll notice that this is where city hall is located on the amphitheater, and that was very strategic in order to create an opportunity that we can start having events and so forth in the wash, utilize the city's existing investment of the amphitheater and the entirety of the wash. So, please don't get fixated or focus on the design of the layout of the footprint of city hall here, because it's not designed, and it could change, but it is representative of a four- or five-story building of approximately 125,000 square feet. So, there is a parking, surface parking to the north, which contains approximately 75 to 80 parking spaces. There's a parking area to the south of the city hall of approximately 40 to 50 parking spaces. This is a three-story, 100,000-square-foot Class A office building with the opportunity for retail on the ground floor. This is approximately 1,000-car parking garage, and so the height of that would be no taller than the three-story office building in front. So we have a four- or five-story city hall, three-story office building, three-story parking garage. On the south side of the park, there's a sister building to this one, to building B. It's three-story, 100,000-square-feet, Class A office building with the allowance for retail on the bottom, if it so chooses, and then approximately 900 parking spaces in this parking deck right here. Again, it would be no taller than this building, so we don't have parking decks sticking up over, over the Class A buildings. Coming in off of Monty Vista, these are, I'm sorry, excuse me, thank you, 150th, is, these are retail and office buildings as well. So, the one really key component of this is the civic square, which is this area right here, which would provide the city the opportunity to host city events. You know, things could move maybe from the ballpark to there, there could be other additional new events that could take place, and so holiday celebrations, things of that nature could all take place in the square. One thing I would like to just point out is this, I'm going to zoom in on the next slide and talk about phase one, and we can talk a little bit about, actually, let me do it on this one, parking, traffic circulation. So, back up to this one. You'll notice that parcel A, the entirety of the parcel, has a connection to the existing curb cut on Monty Vista. There is one here onto 150th, there's the second one onto 150th, there's a third one onto 150th, and there's a connection to McDowell. This connection to McDowell would be a ride-in, ride-out, because there's an existing median at this location. And then, these, this connection to 150th and this connection to 150th is really, really very strategic and important. Because we have a parking facility of about 1,000 cars here, and roughly 900 cars here, ingress and egress out of that parking facility is important to the success of these office buildings, and also to ensuring that the pedestrian environment around the square is appropriate, and we don't have traffic congestion. So that direct access to 150th is very important for the success and the flow of traffic. The main entrance into the civic square project, if you will, is right in here, would be a boulevarded ingress and egress. You would come in, turn to the right, and we're contemplating a one-way at this point in time, going this way, and there would be diagonal parking. And there would be diagonal parking on both sides. So there would be diagonal parking of about 80 cars in front of this building and north of the civic square. And then you would come out, and you could go this way. It would be, we're contemplating one-way on this direct, the street as, as well. And then this would also be 80 cars. And then also, there's the connection onto Monty, excuse me, McDowell, if that makes sense. So what you're going to see in the first phase of the project is this right here. It contains approximately 12.8 acres. And so the City Hall facility would be constructed, and also this northern Class A office building, that's 100,000 square feet with the opportunity for retail on the ground floor, along with approximately 1,000 space parking deck. All of this infrastructure that you would see here would be put in, including the two-acre park, the City Hall, the northern parking surface, and the, and the, and the southern parking area, and the spine road to McDowell, because we need to have two ways in and out for public safety. So all of this 12.8 acres you would see, you see right here outlined in white, would be the first phase of the project. So the PAD itself does talk and sets the framework for some architectural vernacular. It doesn't get into the specifics. It relies, it sets the general tone, and then it relies on our design guidelines. But it does set the basis for high-quality and timeless architecture. That is forward-thinking. We're not looking to create a historical reproduction of any type of building in Goodyear. We want something to be very Goodyear-specific and speaks to the Goodyear values and core values, not core values, but the Goodyear values, right? We want to have something that's timeless with a variety of different materials, glass, metal, brook, brick, and so forth. That really also creates, and we're going to focus, as I mentioned before, on the pedestrian experience. We don't create shade for folks to be able to get out and walk around. So the PAD also does not get into the exact details of streets, because the street sections, and we're going to have on-street parking, how all that is going to get, is not engineered yet. It doesn't get into the specifics of landscape at this point in time, nor does it with sidewalk widths. But we know that we want very wide sidewalks, because we want to create the opportunity for outdoor eating along this, along this, along the square, if you will, and then also plenty of room for people to still move about. It doesn't get into the, what types of street trees, or what our street benches may be, or our street lights. Those are all things that we, the PAD recognizes as important, and we've created a process for us to work with the developer in order to have that, that successful design effort as we move through the plating process. So we will be working with them as they move forward on parcel A, to develop and so forth, to discuss these very, very important elements that will make it the, the destination that we want it to be. There we go. So with that, Mayor, if there's any particular questions, we'd be delighted to answer them about the PAD proposal.
Throw the floor, open to everybody, and.
I've got a question.
Not just questions, I think ideas or expectations, so. I'm sorry, Greg, was that you?
Yes, I just, you're not planning for scooters, are you? I hope not, but, yes.
I think Council's going to be having a work session about scooters coming up in the next couple of months, in the fall, yes.
I have a question.
Could you back it up just a couple of slides?
Sure.
You know, I assume where that Town Hall is, we have the park. If it comes time that we put events, because there's several of us on here that, or maybe all of us, I don't want to speak for myself, always wanted a gathering place. And this is a perfect example of a perfect gathering place, with the park and City Hall, and with the commercial, and the offices around there. I would, I would hope that, that road there that's set for parking, where you have some commercial on either side, that we'd have the ability to kind of close that off if we have a major event there, so that we could actually put in food trucks or whatever, like we did with the balloon, balloon event, okay? Where you could turn that whole area into a gathering place, so to speak, with more, more events other than just hanging out, you know, at the park. But I do like the idea of having the park right in front of the City Hall, and the number of commercial and the office spaces, et cetera, will create the, in, in my view, it will create the density that's needed to generate this. And my hope overall, because I, I like this concept, my, my hope overall is, over time, this will bring other retail, because now you have the density, walking distance, where these people can, can go to these various commercial events and restaurants, et cetera. Also hoping that we put sometimes a connectivity to that, to over to the shops across the Wash. So not only if they happen to be in the amphitheater, if they want to go across and support some of the restaurants over on the other side, they got that capability without having to walk down and around, some type of pedestrian walk-through. But I really do like this concept.
I shouldn't speak first, I love the, the planning and zoning. Mayor always has to speak last, but in this case, I, I'm going to take ownership of that, because I spent so many years working on this to have to turn it down. So I was looking, we talk about the height in the City Hall. So when you come into the street and the City Hall's before you, I think of five-story, where it actually sort of builds up to the City Hall. And, and so in a sense, that gives you that more civic feeling, that that's the powerful overview of the community.
Mayor, may I make a comment regarding that?
Please do.
Let me back up one slide, this one here, so it may help a little bit illustrate. So these buildings here will be approximately 20 to 24 feet tall. They're, they could be two-story, but they may be one-story. These would be three, and then this is four or five. So if you think about it, we really have this wedding, I'm going to use the wedding cake analogy, right? So we have a, we start small, and it gets taller and taller. And the vista coming in, in the main ingress and egress point into here, you're going to be looking across the pla, the, the park itself to a very timeless and stately, if you will, City, City Hall facility, which really will provide that visual anchor that you're referring to. So, yes, ma'am.
Sorry, we're sharing a microphone. I also wanted to point out that if it were to be a four-story to.
Yep, a little louder.
There you go. If it did need to be a four-story to get the right-sized floor plates, our desire would still be to create the height through parapets, or we certainly would like to see the height of a five-story building, but to get the width of the floor plates, a four-story might make sense. We wanted to leave that open, but absolutely agree, the height to make that a stately building is something that's important to the project.
I know that we're looking for vibrant commercial property, and at our last meeting, we, we just approved the mini-storage, which is also part of the Goodyear Regional Center PAD. So that's adjacent to parcel B. So is, will there be any restrictions for those types of commercial uses in these areas?
Mayor, if we may, thank you, that's an excellent question. Thank you, I'm going to let Katie answer that one.
Thank you.
We can't wait to hear her answer, right?
Yes, absolutely. Rezoning these parcels is an opportunity for us to look at some of those uses. As I said, it was zoned in 2000, 2001, so, you know, it's an older PAD. This PAD has a different concept, where we have very general permitted uses listed, but then we actually have a very specific prohibited use list. Mini-storage and outdoor storage are uses that are prohibited in all three parcels. But then there's other uses that we might not want to see in this particular commercial area that have been included on the prohibited use list. Those kind of uses that aren't pedestrian-friendly, that don't bring about all the pedestrian activity that we want to see, that might not be good if there happens to be a mixed-use residential building nearby. So we, we definitely have looked through those and included those.
Sheri?
I, I want to thank everyone for bringing this forward, because this has been a long time in the making. I, I like the concept of, of the mixed together. I, I think that's great. I, I like how the first slide kind of really does show how it all worked together, you know, something along those lines. I like the classic looks, and I'm sure you'll have great designers who will be able to bring something that's, that will be timeless, stately, kind of a vocal, a focal point when you come to that area. So you do want to gather there, you do want to be there. Access to the park, I, I think this will be a great addition, and it will probably kind of jump-start those other parcels. As we get people in this area, I think that'll jump-start around the Harkins, and hopefully we'll start to see the dominoes fall, because this is just wonderful. I, I just would like to see something, like you said, stately, that doesn't scream, "I was built in," you know, 2020, something that's not trendy, but it is timeless. So, but I, it's a great presentat, I love how you have it set up, so I'm, I'm looking forward to it.
Kathleen?
Christopher, are you talking a total like about 2,000 parking spaces?
Mayor, if I may, the, let me back up here for a second. So there are, between the two structured park, parking facilities, here and here, there's about roughly, and round numbers, 1,900. There's 80, approximately 80 parking spaces on the street here and here. There's about 75 to 80 here, and about 40 here. So we have, if you think about it, however, just from a square footage need, for these three buildings, including this, or these two buildings, plus the City Hall facility, that's 200, I mean, that's, that's a lot of square footage, right? It's 325,000 square feet. And so by the time you do the parking calculations and so forth, and our private sector partners, who will be constructing these Class A buildings, know what the Class A market requires in order to park, because you're not going to have a Class A tenant or user of those facilities unless they can all park their employees there. So that's an important consideration, and I think this, we've worked very closely with, with Globe and Butler Design to tuck in, if you will, the park, the structured parking, and have direct ingress and egress, so we don't create traffic problems through the square itself. But parking is a very important aspect of the success of the project. As much as we want to focus on pedestrians and bicycles, and they're important, obviously we have to have parking as well. So it's, it, we've, I think, the way we've tucked this in, it provides the parking that's needed, and also preserves that pedestrian experience.
And the one thing, Kathleen, is it's going to be walkable. So though, for the first time, we'll have a, we'll have a large community that could walk to the, to the areas where we have not had that before. So that would help. Go ahead, Kathleen.
The next part of my question is the connectivity. To the right of Harkins, where the mall areas, is that going to be all connectivity with both sides? So that the, where the City Hall complex is going to be, is it going to be also the connectivity, maybe, you know, for people on bicycles, so they're not caught up in that traffic? Those underground bike paths, so that they can get over to the other side?
Well, Mayor, if I may, Commissioner, at this point in time, I think we don't know exactly what's going to take place with the mall site. But your point is very well-founded, and, and something that we would desire to have is that appropriate connectivity, not only for vehicles, but pedestrians and bicycles. So it would be, as that, as that property develops at some point in the future, that would be a major component. Now, whether or not there's under-road passes and things of that nature, we're certainly not anywhere near making a decision or recommendation on that.
I just wanted to add and point out that, you know, part of this design and lining up City Hall right there was also to take advantage of Harkins and try and draw, we hope people go to Harkins and then come and eat afterwards at the fabulous restaurants that are going to want to locate, and then maybe let their kids play at the Civic Park, and it's a whole evening, so. And then, of course, when there's events, I'm sure there will be lots of opportunities for traffic control, kind of like, you know, I mean, it's an extreme example, but like you see on First Fridays downtown, where, you know, if we expect lots of people to be moving back and forth, we can always use those as opportunities to safely get people across the more major streets.
Wally?
Thank you. I'm really open to anything, Christopher, because it's too early, but I love that, I love where we're going to put it, and I love the thought that's going into the planning of it. Having spent a lot of time on Coronado and seen their big entry park down by the Dell, and they have a band shell where they have concerts, I envision seeing that in our public area, and, but I, I have to approach and ask this question on behalf of so many of us in Pebble Creek that have golf carts that now go 35 and 40 miles an hour. I know that I was in the discussions when we talked about the Bullard Wash, and it was decided, or not decided, to allow any golf carts in the Wash at area. So I feel we've really underutilized that Wash area, because you can't get to it. But I'm hoping that because we're going to finally get the traffic lights working on 150th, that golf carts can come in on 150th, and then just park in the parking garage for those that are licensed with our Arizona plate, which we are, and we are street legal. But there's a lot of folks that, that, they're looking forward to having activities close by that they can drive their golf carts to, and they don't have to use their motor vehicles.
Thank you. Brandon?
I'm going to reiterate, I am excited about this project. I think it'll be a real exciting use of that space. I'm also like the economic portion of it a lot as well. I'm excited about that. And I don't know if this is the spot to talk about it or not, but Parcel Charlie, what's the, is that only, what does that look like? Multifamily, I'm concerned about too much multifamily being right there, and then pushing out a potential future marketplace, or something like that in the future. So, I don't know if this is the time to talk about that or not, but I was just curious what the other uses, if it's going to be a mix. I know Arrowhead knows they came after the malls came in, or after. So I just, I'd hate to start squeezing out a potential space for something like a Tempe Town Market, or a Desert Ridge, or something like that, and we just become multifamily around that area, so.
Thank you, great question. So when we first started looking at this, I know, I'm not a broker, but I went and looked at some of the other mall sites, like Arrowhead Mall, Chandler Fashion, and some of those. And when you look at the mall site, plus, you know, what we typically call the out parcels, so they're kind of within the major ring road, but not part of the mall itself, they're generally about 140 acres of commercial. And if you carve out this parcel C, we have 142 acres left here. So it looks like, without that parcel C, there is a viable, major regional center parcel still left. And it's even a little bigger than some of the existing ones out there today. So that gave staff some comfort. We also did see that at some mall locations, multifamily have gone in those out parcels. Arrowhead is one, there's multifamily in the out parcels. And then there's some other examples, too. So it does seem to be a viable model to have multifamily as part of a mall site, or regional, commercial, entertainment, whatever it's going to be.
Yeah, and that was just my concern, that it would maybe push out that eventually. Because I have seen, I think, Arrowhead, everyone is getting built. They built the mall, and then the multifamily came after the mall. It was chicken versus egg, I don't know. Do you know how big Tempe Town Market is acre-wise? I know it's kind of on the spot. I was there, I was there last night, so I was just kind of curious what, what the size versus this would be. But yeah, that's right. Just want to be smart with the little land that we have there.
Mayor, if I may add on to that, thank you. Early on in the stages of this project, about a year ago or so, Katie and I and the team were doing some research on successful mixed-use centers. There's a lot of mixed-use centers around the country, some of which have been very successful, and some of which have not come to fruition as much as people would have liked. And so what we found was a mixed-use center, much like what this project is proposing, of about 35 to 45 acres or so, those are the ones that have been typically successful. The ones like, in Lakewood, Colorado, I believe it is, South Lake, Texas, which was the image of the square in the very first slide here tonight. I'm just going to go back, so everybody can see it, because it's, it's a really neat image. This is South Lake, Texas. Ours will be a little bit different than this, but nevertheless, this is, this still, this whole project is about 35 to 45 acres. This is their City Hall, that you can see back here anchoring. This is about a two-acre park in front as well. So the scale, the size, is very similar to what we're talking about. Now, the architecture's going to be different, and so on and so forth. But nevertheless, this is a very successful example. As well as Sugar Land, Texas, is about 35 to 40 acres. And in Sugar Land, their, where their City Hall is, and their downtown core, is right next. to a regional power center. So it's kind of embedded, it's almost set up exactly like this with the re, potential regional mall site there and some multi-family and so on and so forth around it. So what we really attempted to do was learn the lessons of success from those who paved the way forward, so we could apply them here, so we can set our own selves up for as much success as we can.
Bill, I'm going to call, I'm going to answer this. Brian?
Okay, thank you. Uh, first and foremost, I think this is amazing. Very excited about this as a resident and somebody that loves Goodyear. My only question to you is, has the developer of the mall or the potential site for the mall, Ben talked to about this, had any input? Because to me, this is a significant investment that the city is making to make that a successful location. So, just curious.
Thank you. Great question. So our partner on this project that we're talking about tonight is the Globe Corporation. And, uh, they have also a partnership with the Mesa Ridge Group, who is the, um, the lead on the regional mall site. So they're certainly aware of the project, um, supportive of the project, I believe. And, uh, you know, we're certainly hoping that the success of parcels A, B, and C will drive the development of that Mesa Ridge site. So we remain hopeful.
Good, thank you.
Bill?
Are we going to talk further about parcels B and C later, or is this toward the, are we at the end? That's question one.
I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't quite hear.
I didn't want to get, I didn't want to get ahead, but we've focused a lot on the civic center, or is there more presentation on B and C?
Not so much tonight, no, sir. We, we really wanted to focus in on parcel A, which is the most activity-intensive portion. B is, on the north side of B is the conventional single-family that goes south more dense, and then C is either multi-family and/or commercial.
Okay. That was just a more point of curiosity, but my actual question is, are there any concern? Can you go to the? One more, I think. Yeah, that one. Any concern, um, about, what I, I wrote this note, about obstructed views with the garages facing the office buildings? I mean, I think of the office building as having, I've got a win, a room or an office with a window, but I face the garage. Is there any, has there been any discussion about concern about that and whether that impacts the rentability?
Sure. That is a fantastic question. Thank you. Mayor, if I may?
You may.
Um, so although we haven't got that level of detail yet, we have had, I have had some conversations with, uh, Butler Design about the distance, if you, I'm going to go to the next slide because it zoomed in a little bit more. The distance between the office building and the, um, parking structures, in order to not create a canyon that people feel unsafe. And so Butler has worked and they've, they've actually done a couple of little studies about this corridor, if you will, between, oh, sorry, I don't know what happened. The corridor between, this corridor right here, to, to, to make it feel almost like a linear park. Um, now, the treatment of the bottom floor of the parking facilities is very important from a pedestrian standpoint and also a visual, a quality visual product. Sets that expectation. Is this safe, you know, you just drive through, is it safe, is, is it kind of scary because it has a parking garage or i- is it just treated? Now, we haven't got into the specifics of what the skin of that may look like, but we all share a very common, um, thread and vision of making it very pedestrian-oriented, friendly. So it's still going to be a parking deck. It may have some canvas awnings or things of that nature out on the perimeter of it. And then also really due to your point, um, council member or vice mayor, Stip, excuse me, I'm still learning that. That corridor between those buildings is, is sim, going to be similar to a linear park. That is also a, an emergency access way as well, so we also have to provide for that.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
It does. It, it, I didn't think that it was going unthought of, but, um, when you look at that, it's such a great design, uh, you know, from a, uh, what do we do with this, with this parcel, that I would hate for that to become a turnoff to a potential user, um, as it goes forward. So thanks for, uh, just having already thought of it.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Next, oh, Laura?
Can you explain to us what are the attributes of the Class A office space that would make it different, say, from the office space at Litchfield Road and McDowell? Uh, just so that we can understand what constitutes the Class A.
Yes, Mayor, if I may?
You may.
Yes, ma'am. Um, thank you for the question. It's actually, I have it on the next couple of slides, but I'll be happy to answer it now. Um, so Class A, we did a little, did a little bit of poker research, if you will, um, is defined as having the highest rating of location, finishes, material, technology, and design in the local marketplace or the regional marketplace. So it doesn't get into like, what is the quality of the granite necessary, necessarily in, in doing all of that, but it's the combination of all of those elements that sets it apart in the marketplace as the most desirable place to be. And I hope that answers your question.
Well, I suppose if somebody wants to rent an office, they're a high-end company, they want to be able to, you know, have everything within that, electrically, or the computer, you name it, so they walk into that and then that's the attractor to them. So I'm assuming that helps.
Yes, yes, ma'am.
Do you think that we would ever have, uh, any, um, development above a store? An apartment above a store? And we, you know, we talked about that as an original city center.
Mm-hmm.
We had the, you know, the store below and then apartment above. Do you think there is a chance of that?
Um, Mayor, thank you for that question. So we are, um, certainly encouraging that and allowing it in the P A D, especially on this northeast portion of property right in here. The, the buildings right on the square are, are really intended to be off, Class A office above and maybe on the ground floor, but also with the allowance of having retail or restaurants and so forth on the ground floor. We'll see how that market shakes out, but we want to work with the developer to design those buildings so that bottom floor could be flexible to house any of those use, uses. But as far as mixed-use vertical, you know, residential, you're, you're living above, um, it's, it's really in this northern portion, I don't know what happened to the pointer. It's that northeast corner and potentially the northwest corner, which, where that is most likely to happen.
Any other questions? Excitement? Everybody smile. Tell everyone, no, this is, uh, I mean, I, I have great hopes for this, that it will be so successful, that it will bring back some retail. Um, after a while, I think the public is going to tire of not being able to go in a store and smell and touch and feel. Um, and so it, it will be maybe smaller. Remember the day of the boutiques?
Yep.
Um, they were very popular. So I'm hoping the marketeers and the business owners don't give up on this and say, well, we like everything on a screen, all I have to do is this. Well, how much excitement is in this? Is walking in and purchasing something and you see it, you feel it, you wrap it up, you take it home and it's a gift? So I think that, I am hoping society will, will move back to when Lord was younger and, uh, try something that'll be new. They'll be bored with this other and maybe it'll be something new, so, um, I'm going to turn this, yes?
We do have a few more slides?
Oh, you do.
We do. So, uh, I'll let Chris.
You're up. Thank you, thank you, Julie.
Yes, thank you. Um, so the next portion is, is relatively quick and it doesn't get into a whole lot of detail, but what we wanted to do is outline the partnership we've had with Globe. Um, this is a true public-private partner and Globe has been a, a fabulous partner in working with us, not only in the design, but the P A D and so on and so forth. We've spent countless hours together and it's, and it's been very fruitful. So I want to publicly thank them for their cooperation and helping to bring this to life. So.
Can we introduce someone? But it'd be, it's just, I, you don't want to be, you don't want to be a secret, so.
Certainly, we have, uh, George Getz from Globe and we have, um, Mike Olson. Mike Olson from Globe.
Would they like to just come to the microphone and say a couple of things? I invite you both.
It looks like.
Sure. Uh, well, thank you for having us, uh, this evening. Um, George Getz, uh, president of Globe Corporation, it's a family-owned business. We've had the land out here since 1970 when it was a scallion farm. So we've, uh, been a resident of Goodyear for a long, long time as well. So, um, we share the same excitement that you all do as far as what we might be able to bring to this area. And, um, as was mentioned earlier with Julie, we have spent a few hours on this and with, with the team as well. And, uh, there are other members of the teams that help us put this all together. All know Ed Bull probably, and, um, Jeff Pepperth is here with BDG, who's been working a lot of the design, Brian Gaitner, Mike Olson, who else am I missing? Brian's there. So we, it, it's been a real team effort, to say the least, obviously, and, um, you know, our goal is to create something special out here. We tried to do that with West Core and the mall, we thought bringing them over. Um, I could go over a lot of history of how we moved into the general plan in the, uh, in the 90s from a SunCore site over to our site to get this established. I don't know if any of you remember all that. I don't want to rewind the tape too far, but, uh, but, um, the way we look at this really is, this partnership that we have with the city and what we might be able to create here with the city, which we're, as I said, we're very excited about. To us, we feel like this is an anchor for the area. And in order to create a kind of development that we're talking about for the rest of the remaining developable land, you need to have an anchor. Mesa Ridge looks at it as an anchor, being a Dillard's or a Macy's as an anchor. They need those anchors in order to develop. Obviously, we know what's happened to retail. But when you bring the city center, civic square here together, to us, we're looking at 135,000 square foot city center anchor. And what that does then is the rest of the development feeds off of that anchor, just like smaller stores feed off of the Dillard's and Macy's as an anchor. And so the way we look at this is by bringing the city here and creating this vibrancy and this density, it's going to create more interest from other people to want to be there, in the service business, in the office business, whatever the case may be. And the city's the one that really is the anchor tenant for us to create and for us to be able to commit to build 100,000 square foot office building. We wouldn't just throw up a 100,000 square foot office building if there was nothing else out here. But by the city having its location at this, I feel very confident that we could throw up a 100,000 square foot office building. We'll get at least. We'll have the parking, we'll have the city, we'll have retail, and all of a sudden it'll be an area where people want to come in office rather than drive down I-10 to go to their offices. And so if we can create a Class A office building, um, at a competitive rate, um, I think we're going to attract a lot of office users here. And, and we, we've committed to the 100,000 square foot office building, and believe me, as soon as that gets filled up, we're going to start on the second 100,000 square foot office building. And the whole goal is to try to get this thing really launched and get it going as quick as we can to create that urban feel, that dense feel, that, um, some of those pictures depicted. Is that enough for me?
Well, excited. Any, anybody have a question, or if they have them at the table? Yeah.
Thank you all very much. You guys have done a great job. And I, I mentioned this last time when I was here, but this team that you've assembled, um, who have, we've been working with, have done an outstanding job and you ought to be very proud of Julie and Chris and everybody on the team. They're, they're wonderful and, uh, easy to work with, and so it's been a great partnership so far.
It's wonderful. Well, maybe it'll be a model around the valley when they see that actually cities and, uh, developers can work together very closely, so. All right, you have the floor again, Mr..
Yes, Mayor, thank you. Uh, just have a couple more slides just to illustrate a couple of the things moving forward. So, um, one of the questions that, um, we sort of anticipated, if you will, is why move city hall from down where it was, down by the ballpark, to the north? Well, there's a couple of reasons for that, as you just heard from Mr. Getz and from Julie as well. We have a willing, able and desirous property owner who's willing to partner with the city. As a result of that partnership and that first phase, if you sho, if you remember that, 12.8 acres, will have roughly, uh, about 1,000 people there during the daytime, which will, as Mr. Getz just alluded to, drive a lot of additional retail and entertainment type uses, especially, Mayor, if I may use your word boutique, hopefully, right, uh, type of uses. Um, as Katie pointed out, the previous 2014 ULI recommendation was to move it to the north and moving the, and it is in conformance also with the general plan, having that density and that concentration of commercial and residential there. As Mr. Getz also pointed out, and it's like he read my slide, um, was is that this would be a catalyst and create momentum for a lot of additional growth. And also, let's not forget that not only is it the city hall employees, the public-facing section of that, but the city hall is also anticipated to, well, will have a library of increased size, so you have approximately 160,000 people in and out of the library a year. So not only in addition to the office workers there, but also the, the visitors going back and forth to the library as well. So just in very high level, the overview of the partnership, uh, the city hall facility and those parking fields in the north-south and the two-acre park out in front equals roughly five to seven acres. It could be somewhere close around six, but nevertheless, the city will own the city hall building and that park site. As I mentioned, there's the parking on the north and the south. There will be on-street parking as well. The, the two, or the northern parking deck, which would be constructed with that first Class A building that Mr. Getz alluded to, um, we're working to also having that some component of free public parking and off-hours, so that people could come on the weekend and things of that nature. The city is an active customer of the development, and then at the conclusion of it, we will actually own that property that I referred to. Finally, just overall benefits to the city. That 100,000 square foot Class A building would come up, um, during the same time the city hall construction. It is Class A, as Councilperson Kano referred to, what, kind of what does that mean? It's the highest rating of location and finishes and so forth that I explained previously. It will create a, the destination where we have employment, uh, retail, entertainment, and also recreational opportunities. And then importantly for this community is, I've heard Mr. or council member Pazillo refer to many times, that destination where we can bring our families, walk around, enjoy something outside. Um, and the two-acre park certainly delivers on that as well. So the next steps, um, after this particular work session, tonight, after this meeting adjourns, we will take about a 10-minute or so break and then they will reset the room. The planning commissioner will go up on the dais and conduct a public hearing where, um, anybody who wants to speak, um, can do so, just like any other public hearing. Uh, tonight, we hope that they make a recommendation to you, they vote and make a recommendation to the council that's advertised to come before the council on July 8th. We also working, as Mr. Getz pointed out and Julie mentioned, on, uh, parking agreements, development agreements, we'll be working on that streetscape plan that I referred to previously. And then also on parcel B, which is that one north of parcel A, uh, close to Rio Paseo, there are, um, home builders who have plaits in currently that we're, we're, we are beginning to review. Obviously, the zoning has to get approved first before that moves forward, but they are working on, uh, we are working on some plaits there as well. So with that, Mayor, that concludes our presentation and we're happy to answer any additional questions.
Well, thank you. Any other questions or comments? Yes, Julie?
I think one missing piece is I just wanted to highlight that the project first phase is intended to be, uh, fully available for a grand opening in the summer of 2022.
Very excited. I, I just want to thank the planning and zoning for all of you coming early, uh, to be with us and to make your comments. You're very important to us, and I didn't say this at the beginning. We do depend on planning and zoning, all right? You review everything before we get it, so you, you make it easier for us. And especially when the public comes in and talks, either praises or complains, um, it helps us prepare, uh, for the meeting and how we're going to handle it. You're sort of at a disadvantage because you don't have anybody before you, so sometimes I know that our reaction to some of the things that you've done are maybe a little bit different than yours, but we greatly appreciate it. And then I think on this whole project is our teamwork. It re, it really is. Uh, so it's not, uh, staff, um, the developer and us. Um, and so I think you can all put your shoulders back and be very proud of this accomplishment. And in my view, this is one of our, one of our biggest accomplishments, to actually bring this back to life and have it happen. And to be at the part of our city where we're doing quite well. Uh, the budget's doing well. The people have bought into the city now. They have taken ownership of this city. And we've had it before, but not the degree we have now. So I think it's going to be very successful. So I look forward and to meeting with you again when some of these crop up and, and the excitement of it, and, uh, you'll be our ambassadors, because you know the coffee talk will happen. Sometimes we're not. Sometimes we're not there for the coffee talk, so I depend on you to correct the misnomers and keep the spirit up among the public, so, okay? So, anything else, Julie, do you have? All right, so I'm just going to make an announcement. Planning and Zoning Commission will convene their own meeting in ten minutes. There being no further business to discuss, this joint meeting of the city council and